All right, we'll begin our second budget work session of preparing for fiscal year 21. It is Monday, April 27, 2020, and we have convened the mayor and council of Town of Berlin. All council members are present except for Councilmember Brittany Gann. So we're going to get tonight, our discussion will be about the utilities funds, or also called the enterprise funds, which are all the services that are provided by the Town of Berlin that are not part of the general fund. So if you're ready to go, let's get on right now.
The first presentation this evening will be from Chris Carroll of the Guardian Healthcare Renewal. So in your packets, you have a packet of paper that's titled July 1, 2020 Annual Insurance Update. Chris?
Thank you. Good afternoon, early evening. Appreciate everyone having me in. Jumping right into the proposal, first page you'll see executive summary recap, starts and will end with the recommendations for this upcoming year. Anything that we talk about from a benefit perspective goes into effect July 1st. That's the policy year running from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021. The renewal recommendations after the marketing process is to remain with CareFirst Blue Cross Blue Shield and not make any plan changes. So those plans will remain the same underlying copays structure in terms of network, doctors and physicians. In addition to that, the health reimbursement arrangement for the HRA is recommended to stay the same as well. And finally, the financial impact to take that action on blended with the HRA and the medical premium, and there is a multiple line discount that we'll also be presenting, will be a 3.79% increase over current. That results in a monthly increase of $2,712 in aggregate, and we'll talk about how that share recommended to be shared between employer, the town, and the employees and their co-premium. The marketing was as a result of reviewing United Healthcare, Aetna, and, excuse me, United Healthcare and Aetna, which both declined to be competitive in this particular policy year, as well as we looked at the legit insurance trust, which is using the Cigna network. Our recommendation to remain with CareFirst is based on historical changes within the last three cycles, as well as it is with the maximum cost picture, which would be higher under the legit program. There's some maximum risk that we would have to take on on a two-year commitment. Finally, our ancillary marketing was focused to our current incumbent as well as CareFirst Blue Cross Blue Shield, because they are offering us a bundle discount to put the dental envisioned with them lining it up with the same medical carrier. And that was an appealing opportunity within the total rate relief that's provided by CareFirst.
Does that mean that by bundling it, there was savings in the total cost of over $18,000?
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're all understanding the situation. Thank you.
You're welcome. The next page is the medical renewal initial release. We're labeling it as M1. The renewal was released from CareFirst initially at 12.4%, keeping everything the same. Jumping quickly to the next page, which is M4, which is the results. As you imagine, there's an M2, an M3, and M5, but we just redacted it down to the key details. With the medical renewal bundle discount in M4 with the health reimbursement arrangement, that's where in the lower right-hand corner you get the net effect of the 3.79% cost increase versus current. Jumping forward one page ahead, which is an important page, the recommendation is to split that increase on a 50% share. That means 50% of the increase monthly will go to co-premiums paid by the employees that are enrolled in the plan, and the other 50% will be absorbed internally as part of the employer and town costs. What's most important when the employees are looking at an increase is the lower right-hand corner, which is the increased cost per pay. So what you see under the current column stratified by employee, employee plus spouse, employee plus child or children and family, as compared to the renewal projected increase. As an example, $17.35 is the employee only cost currently. It would increase to $23.64, or effectively increasing $6.29 per pay 26 times per year, which aggregates to $160.94 for reference. Those cost increases for employees, spouse, children, and family are higher based on their beginning totals being higher and are shared at a per rata basis from one to the other. The last cost item on the next page on M4 with the HRA includes the town employer financial impact, the monthly increase being $2,712. The employees absorbing half of that increase, leaving the employer increase at $1,356 monthly or budgeted to be $16,272 annually. The reason why we use that name as estimated is that your volumes of enrolled members will change throughout the course of the year, but based on this snapshot in time and multiplying it forward 12 months, that's what the annual total cost increase is recommended. Any questions on that while we're on the medical topic?
Yes. The current plan that we have only allows us to use in-network labs for our employees, correct?
Yes.
And the way that I understand it is PRMC and AGH are both out of network?
That is correct.
Is there an analysis that's been done to show what that cost increase would be to include those two regional hospitals?
Yeah, very good question. So we are looking at some solutions regionally, in particular with it being in the shadows of AGH and being good community partners that they are. The downside is that CareFirst does not even allow it, nor does United Healthcare or Aetna. So they aren't options for us. If we are self-funded, some of the strategies that we would look at potentially even with the legit arrangement, you can then make accommodations outside of the contract. But a financial analysis hasn't been done in the current environment, only because it's not an option.
Okay, but it is something we're looking at for future fiscal?
Absolutely, and we, the "we" of "us," we look at it extensively, and we're actually working with AGH right now, another potential concept for the community which could benefit us here as well. So it's something we're looking closely at. The cost increase for the lab, the LabCorp and the Quests of the world give very, very deep discounts, but if it's a siloed expense and the hospital is looking at it more as a global wellness umbrella, we believe that if there's some penny cost increase, but maybe some pound gains that would be available, but they have to be kind of bundled together. CareFirst, United Healthcare, Aetna, they're not really interested in looking at that long-term yet, maybe down the road.
Do you anticipate that you'll be able to give us some meat to work with on the next budget?
Yes.
Is something going to transpire within the next year?
Potentially, there's something for us in the next 12 months, yes.
Because I know the Town of Berlin, ever since the very beginning, when they first started talking about the concept of a hospital in the town, has been very supportive and we have a great deal of confidence in the services that they provide. So I think, I think I speak accurately, and all of us would be very pleased if you can make that come to fruition.
Excellent. You know, we believe in it as well very strongly, so I think it'd be something that'd be great for the local community.
Thank you.
And there's some data that we'll be able to extract in terms of helping structure some wellness and community education as well. So we think that there's multiple benefits from it. So we're excited about the opportunity, and it would be potentially as soon as January 2021.
Wow, okay, great. Thank you.
Any other medical specific questions before we talk a little bit about the bundle discount and the dental and vision opportunities? As we just mentioned briefly before, the medical premium savings by bundling the dental and vision with CareFirst, translated to $18,535 annual estimate based on current snapshots. And that is broken down, you know, it's great savings, but obviously we have to look very closely at the benefits as well and make sure that the employees are satisfied with the dental and vision options. So we start with looking at the CareFirst Dental, very, you know, well-respected dental carrier in the market. One of the unfortunate parts when we're comparing them is the current principal program has a very, very strong usual customary reasonable fee schedule. So it's hard for us to be as competitive with the CareFirst option. We did offer two options to help combat that, and what we did is we offered a fee schedule program. So if a member uses an in-network dental provider for their care, the fee schedule's not nearly as important because there's no balance billing to the member or their family. We have also offered CareFirst most robust usual customary reasonable fee schedule, which is the 90th percentile, as an upgrade option. So the individual employee for their needs, based on whether their dentist is in-network or out-of-network, will be able to decide whether they want to go with a fee schedule plan and save a little bit of money in the premium in most cases, or pay a little bit more to upgrade to a UCR that's similar to what they have now. The preventative care cleanings will both be 100% under both of the new options to match the principal. However, in-network, we do have a decrease in co-insurance. That's the amount that the employer, I'm sorry, the employee versus the carrier would have to pay by 10% on basic and major services, dropping from 90 and 60 down to 80 and 50. Unfortunately, that is just the high limit under the program that's available through Within those premiums, we'll jump in touch based on vision, and we'll talk about the impact of the premiums to the members. The vision program is an easier transition. Unfortunately, we don't get as many points when we talk about the discounts. We get two points.
Let me just interject one thing back on dental. And it probably will affect maybe a third of the employee group. With the two options with CareFirst, the annual plan maximum goes from $1,000. Under the one Blue Cross plan, it's a $1,500 annual, and under the other, it's a $2,000. So where that plays in, where it's important, where it really plays in is for those employees and/or the family members that are having, you know, root canals, crowns, things of that nature. And there's a bigger benefit. Now, that's probably based off what I've seen affect maybe a third of our employee group. On positive is what I'm getting at.
Have we looked at who our employees are using for dental care, whether they're covered predominantly in-network or in?
I have contacted six providers, six dentists in the area that I'm aware of that people use an AROR with this new plan. So what I would ask, if anybody in this room or any employees, as we always do, let me know who your provider is, and I'll make a phone call.
And part of that open enrollment process will do a lot of one-on-one with the employees to help make them make that decision and make sure that they review their particular provider, because I know it can change. And just all help them think through, okay, that's your family dentist, but if you need an end root canal, would you still go there? Are you going to end up in Salisbury? And making sure they know how to get to the resources that they need to keep as much of the care in network as possible. Moving forward to the vision, the vision's pretty easy from the standpoint of Davis Vision's very widely accepted through CareFirst Blue Cross Blue Shield. We see most of the large employers in the area that happen to either use CareFirst or CareFirst third-party administrators do use the CareFirst Vision Network, so we wouldn't see any problems or major disturbances there for the employees. There are some small increases and some small decreases in different places based on your current enrollment, but in general, we won't see this as very disruptive to the employees. From a payroll deduction standpoint, and again, that's critically important for us to consider as we're looking at any changes, your dental payroll cost changes are listed. These are all listed as 26 pays per year, because again, that's what the employees will see on a per paycheck basis. And you can see that the dental plan one would actually decrease by 69 cents a pay for the individual as opposed to increase by $2.45 if they wanted the $2,000 annual maximum benefit kind of top-of-the-line CareFirst plan. One of the nice things about that is if they needed a crown this year, but they didn't need one next year, they can move between those two plans, and there's no restriction or you're stuck. It's an annual election. So there's some flexibility there for the employee and their families. The vision payroll deductions, as you can see, we start getting into some kind of fine decimal points, 17 cent difference for the individual. So as I indicated earlier, we don't see that as usually very disruptive for the employees. The last thing in synopsis is the proposed recommendation, and broke them into three bullet points. The first is that we'd like to renew the medical plan with a bundle discount, bundling the dental and vision discount to get to a 4.72% premium increase on the medical, a 0% increase on the HRA to a blended average at 3.79% above current. We'd like to share that increase on the medical between the employee and the town at a 50-50 co-premium cost share. And as Buggel had mentioned above, we'd like to offer the dual dental option plan with the new vision through CareFirst to maximize the discount.
Does anyone have any questions for Chris?
Hold on one second. I think I do. Chris, what was the increase there? So if I understand this correctly, if I'm looking at M4 with the HRA as it is currently, unchanged, the annual increase is going to be $16,272?
That's the net increase to the town on the employer side of it.
So that's this 50-50 split?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Jeff, just out of curiosity, how many people take advantage of the vision and the dental? Wait just a second. Dental, we're talking vision and dental, roughly 50, 50, 55 majority.
Thank you. And that's from 70 or 80 employees?
I thought it was 72. Now, all 72 employees don't let help as well.
Yeah, no way. Well, if we've got our questions answered, I'll answer them now. And of course, if you think of any, let Jeff know, you can always follow us up. Chris, thank you very much for the presentation. It was very informative, and we thank you.
And again, to any employee and to any of you all, if you need me to make a phone call for you, I believe I have called the provider that you normally use. I think I've already called.
Have you?
Yeah, you're good. But I've called the ones that I stick out in my head anyway. I try to do that every year.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you both for the work.
And you can be Nick.
I've got an opening statement. We're going to move into the enterprise fund work session. Some things I want to highlight, and I wish, I hope everyone will be fair with me, I'm operating on about 20 minutes sleep.
Everything okay?
Yeah, everything's great. I just had all of you all on my mind last night.
Good things, Chris.
Good things. Employee wages have been adjusted by 2%. Health insurance with your approval will renew at less than a 4% increase, and all liability insurances have been projected with a 5% increase. I wish to remind everyone that the utility funds operate as a quasi-business, so they can operate with a profit, with the exception of the electric utility, because they are regulated. The overall FY '21 utility fund budget, electric, overall projected budget is up 3%. The fund is projected to have a contingency rainy day fund of $13,000 in FY '21 versus $50,000 in FY '20. This decrease in contingency is due to the increased costs that are mandated by the state of Maryland due to the requirements of purchasing renewable energy direct credits. I can go into great detail on that if we need to. We have to purchase, it's mandated, how many recs we buy each year, and those costs have gone up significantly. I know the mayor's wall where he's been truly supportive of a House bill, I think it's 516, trying to get that thing kiboshed, but right now the momentum's been pulled on that. I don't know if--
There's nothing happening--
There's nothing happening.
Till the legislature--
That's right.
--has an opportunity to start up again.
That's right.
What's the bill about?
Increase of-- The recs, first of all, the sizable increase in recs do not affect co-ops. Okay, but they affect your private companies and municipal.
And the municipals affect us because they never talked about it.
Right.
There's only five municipally-owned electric utilities in the state, and we're not much on anybody's radar because none of them are in the big counties. So we've been forgotten before, and we think that's what's happened here, because most of them were like, really? Why weren't you? Because you didn't talk about it. And you sound hopeful, but the thing is, like, you know, when they'll get to it, I don't know if it'll be the summer in the special session, or if they'll have to wait till the next legislative session. But the best I can say is I'm hopeful, because if the series of hearings and presentations were made, there was no big fuss. It was mainly information, so we shall send--
And then you went to Annapolis.
Yes.
One more than once.
Yeah, yeah. I think it was three times altogether. And, you know, it was very important for all parties, because again, we're not letting anybody trade off.
And the difference in cost versus what was being proposed, it was pretty astronomical, isn't it? What was the difference?
Well, it would have been, I think it was 10 or 12 years from now, hundreds of thousands.
Right.
Basically, they'd be wiping out all these utilities, and that's not even their intent. And I think it's just a matter, again, where, you know, and there was a contention when this bill was passed last year was between the big boys, right? The very big private utilities, and they went back and forth and back and forth, and when all that was happening, nobody was thinking that. And of course, they exempted the co-ops because they're owner-owned. We're saying, well, if you exempt them, why not us? We're owner-owned too. We're just a lot smaller. So we didn't get that big pushback, but unfortunately, they had to suspend the legislature. So again, I'm hopeful, because nobody's been able to say, well, we'd rather you all go out of business, and then everybody's rates go up. That's not gonna happen. I just don't see that happening.
You're looking at, just to give you an idea, for 2019 into 2020, where we're at now, the recs were costing us $156,000. They're going to go to $283,000.
And we're not against--
It gets worse after that, right?
Yeah.
The way that proposal right now, it gets stepped up and ramped up even more later. Correct. But as the mayor's alluding to, the issue with the recs is not so much the recs, it's the specific renewable energy credits that are focused on solar.
And again, renewable for recs, for all the folks who are listening, are renewable energy credits. We've been doing them, we've always, and we want to continue to do that. And this is a fight among the large stockholder-owned utilities. We don't have a fight. We presented what we have done, how we, how our electric utility, along with all the other things the town is doing, why we were the first municipality to receive accreditation as an environmentally sustainable community in the state of Maryland. They were like, really? I said, just because we're small doesn't mean we can't be first at something. And again, my impression is, generally speaking, when they're out there and the big boys are fighting and the big counties, every now and then they say, oh, remember us? We're the Eastern Shore. Those people between Ocean City and the Bay Bridge. And, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's not, it's not, it's not something they're trying to do to be mean. It's just that they're talking in terms of hundreds of thousands of people and hundreds of millions of dollars, and they look at a lot of, a whole budget would be like a simple little line item budget, and you know, as I said, this is very important to us. And I think when we have our opportunity, because they're very gracious, I think both times I had to wait three hours to speak, because guess who goes first? The bigger communities. So that's fine. And we all, the Eastern Shore communities and plus the folks out there in the Western Maryland, we waited and served our time. And when we spoke, they were like, wow. And I think, I think we were right there, and hopefully, if we have to go through the whole process again, that'll be fine.
All five mayors and all five utility directors have all come together on this.
Like Mayor Easton, you know. So certain cases, the electric utility directors testified, and other cases, the mayors, and it just, it all worked out. It's unbelievable.
All right, in FY '20, we increased our water fees by 5% and our sewer fees by 20%. In water and sewer, time period of July of 2019 to March of 2020, the water, the water fund has had an increase in revenues of $431,000.
How much, Jeff?
I'm sorry, I take that back. In FY '19, the revenue for the water fund was $431,000. In FY '20, again, that same timeframe, July through March, revenues are $474,000, an increase of $43,000, or a 10% increase. Okay? In FY '20, we increased our sewer fees by 20%. Again, the same timeframe, July 1 through March. In FY '19, we had revenues of $1 million, and FY '20, $1.4 billion, an increase of $349,000, or a 32% increase. Water, overall, the budget is up 3%. Contingency is projected to be at $4,000 for FY '21 versus $81,000 for FY '20. Department Ed request capital outlay is at $164,000 for FY '21 versus $54,000 for FY ' '20. In FY '21, Jamie Laxton will share with you, he's, the big thing that he'd like to do is to rebuild the pump house, the well house in Palat. Yeah, the public works here. Sewer, first and foremost, I want to share, you take a look at the annual debt, it requires 59 EDUs to pay the debt, the sale of 59 EDUs. In FY '20, we're going to experience a shortfall in sales. We budgeted EDU revenues to be at $466,000, and we've collected up to date $126,000. We are estimating the sale of 37 EDUs in the coming year. Overall, this is, overall, this projected FY '21 budget is up 2%. Contingency for FY '21 is $46,000 versus $44,000 from last year. Department Ed request capital project for FY '21 is $172,000. Major work is needed at two locations, Decatur Street and Williams Street, and various repairs at the plant costing approximately $37,000. All of these planned capital improvements are slated for FY '21. We are also projecting to have the sewer fund transfer to the general fund in FY '21 of $50,000. This transfer will be contingent on the ending balance of the fund in FY '21. Stormwater, overall, the budget is unchanged. There are no projected grants for FY '21. We are estimating to have the stormwater fund transferred to the general fund, $25,000 in FY '21 based on the ending balance of the fund. And that's pretty much what I have there.
All right, good. Thank you.
I could go with Jamie.
Basically, it's just a reminder, because we don't talk about them every month, but the EDU, some years, more money comes in than what we need for upgrades and so forth of years lower. Over time, it balances out. It already has in recent years. But at this point, this is a year where we don't, and I think with good reason, don't anticipate there'll be as much new development as there has been the last couple of years. And just, I think we just should go ahead and plan for a slower time for new development, and then we'll give a judgment year by year as we see how the recovery goes.
I think the irony to this is, mayor and I, two months ago, we met. With all the potential growth that was on the books, I was getting concerned--
With all the potential growth on the books, I would get a concern on the opposite side. Okay? And then it all comes to a screeching halt with what's happening now. So I might want to end this.
The concern was, at that point, is that in four or five years, we may have to begin addressing that. So it's not like it's four or five months away. It's four or five years away. But now, you know, I'd like to hope the economy recovers enough that we can be dealing with that in four to five years. But at this point, we're just, we're trying to take a conservative approach because I think it's the only one that is rational.
And I'd like for everybody, I think the promising thing on this, both funds, the trend is in the right way now with the major increases that were done.
But the number you gave for EDUs this year was a hundred and some thousand dollars. That's actual sales. That's not what is projected to be so.
That's actual sales.
Okay.
Yeah.
Today, not counting in anything that's on the books currently.
Correct.
Again, it's a very conservative approach.
No, no. The actual amount is the actual amount.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. It's not the budget limit. It's the actual.
Okay.
And then we'll start tonight with the electric utilities. Let me go over him.
Hey, Tim. Tim? Come on. Let's go. Come on. Hey, listen, I'm still talking when I'm in there.
Sitting here watching you in Boston.
By the time you get there, it'll be.
A little lag.
Be stealthy. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So you have a big report printout over the pages that stamp draft for fiscal '21 projections, starting with page one. We're going to go to electric fund and electric fund revenues projections. And then Tim will go over the major changes for what's department requested to be for fiscal '21 in expenses and capital items. Projections for electric fund revenues with the help of our engineering company, Booth and Associates. Initially, we have included the projected commercial expansion and residential growth. But due to the circumstances of the current situation, we kind of backed out and took a very conservative approach. So overall, residential services to be projected of an increase of $140,000. Commercial services, increase of $15,000. General service, which is large buildings like AGH or Foodline, who have demand charges, an increase of $9,000. And we have a little increase on the street lights of $2,000. Overall, electric fund revenues, increase of 3%. Not major changes in revenues, was a slight increase. But again, just a reminder, it's operated costs. So if the purchase power are going up in cost, we are increasing the revenue because it's a pass-on cost to the consumers.
And just to give some, again, a prediction for people listening, is we're talking about a 3.2, 3.28% increase, which represents 170, just shy of $174,000 out of a budget of $5,460,000 plus. So, you know, it's just to give some perspective of what these numbers mean because 3.2%, this is very, we're grateful that it's not any more than that, but what we're talking about is less than $200,000 in a $5.4 million budget.
So starting with page two, going forward, electric administration, Tim is going to cover major changes.
As far as the 5,600, which is administration, that budget right there is really decreasing by 1.4%. So that's part of it's going to be going down. I don't know how much you need, wanted to talk about that since it's been with you.
I guess we're just going to cover the electric administration total budget, just may as suggested for the listeners because they don't, they might not have the total picture.
I got it.
So the total amount for administration, electric administration budget is 1.4 million dollars.
Correct.
And the major decrease consists of the contingency, which is your rainy day fund, is decreasing to $13,000, which due to the revenue decrease not being projected with the point of as supposedly be projected with a high increase. And also you have a little bit change of the bond interest here and bond principal. And I see a little decrease of the general overhead, which is recalculated accordingly to the general fund balance.
So again, out of the projected budget of 1.375 or $1,375,000, talking about a reduction of $19,500.
Correct.
In projected income. Okay? That's 1.4%.
The next division there, that is the power plant division. That, that division is going to be increasing by 4.69%. The overall budget for that request is $3,058,782 with an increase of $137,057. Correct me if I'm wrong, that's due to the capital projects that we're going to be doing at the power plant.
Then also you have your renewable energy credit increase of $216,000 in this department.
And I think Jeff, he talked about that a little bit.
Yeah. Come here, Jeff. It's open space.
So we're going to skip the capital outlay items. It's an increase of $45,000 in this department. And then we're going to go in details. It's a separate printout so everybody can see what's beyond capital items.
As far as distribution, which is 5,620, that budget is pretty much staying flat. I'm sorry, it's cut. I'm wrong. It's a 5.78% increase on distribution side. It's $56,096 increase in the total budget for the request for that division is $1,26,268.
And so for the power distribution, by reading this correctly, it's three transformers, some transclosures, which quite fantastic. Here are those, underground electric services and electric poles.
That's right.
We can go through the details. You have a separate printout for electric.
Yes.
So the power plant department, Tim, you want to go with us?
Yeah. As far as the capital projects, the power plant with the installation of the new natural gas engine. I'm looking to install what's basically called a skated system inside the power plant, which is a system that you remotely can start the engines, you monitor the oil pressure, water, that type of thing from right in the office itself. And part of that is due to the fact that when number two engine failed, our person that operates the plant is actually standing right next to that engine when it failed, which could have, you know, been pretty drastic on what could have happened there. This will give us the capability of monitoring each engine remotely right from the office. You can keep an eye on order temperatures, oil temperature, exhaust temperatures, that type of thing. The way it's done right now is when the plant is running, Casey has to actually go to each engine while it's running every 30 minutes. And he records it on a piece of paper, what the temperatures are and that type of thing. So this basically gives you an opportunity of automating the plant, basically, up to today's standards, what it should be. Also, this, also, this is going to take care of the computer that is slated to be replaced because of the software that's on it. Cards has recommended that this computer system that's there now be taken out, removed, and updated. This basically is doing both. It's going to replace that computer that's there now, but then it's also going to give us opportunity of automating the power plant.
And that computer's being replaced because a software program was written?
That's correct.
How long ago?
1999.
There's no support to it.
There's no support to it anymore. The next one that you see there, that's the underground primary power switch. If you look at the substation next to the power plant, there's a big box structure frame there that was built there when the plant was initially built. So that tells you how old it is. I've been wanting to replace that for four or five years now. And I'd like to basically make that an underground switch where all the cables come into it underground, like you see on the road out here. Basically, that'll take care of that. And then the power plant relay upgrade, that's out in the substation itself. There's some relays out there that have been there since 1999. Basically, their life has exhausted. It's a relay that protects the power plant between the output of the generator and the existing grid. So if something was to happen out in the field, this relay would actually, actually open a device and break the connection between the generator and the grid itself, which is designed to do that. So that's what those capital improvements are to the power plant.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Would this power plant relay upgrade be a part of the generator monitoring control system?
No, sir. This is separate.
So it would not work together?
No, this is two separate. The relay upgrade is out in the substation itself.
Okay.
And then the skated system is actually inside the power plant.
Okay.
And the function of that is basically to start and stop the engines, monitor, you know, the vital information that's coming back from each engine. So you can monitor temperature the whole time, oil pressure and that type of stuff. The relays for the power plant relay upgrade, they're actually out in the substation, and they monitor the grid from coming into the station from the outside. But they also monitor the output of the generators to the substation. So if a fault must occur on the outside of the substation, it automatically tells the device to open and to break the connection between the output of the generator and what's coming in.
Okay. But, 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 but the generator monitoring system, control system, would do away with the need for some guy to take a pelt so he can go record something every half hour?
Yes, sir. Yes.
And will that allow you to read, you to look at it remotely as well, like on your phone if you're, I don't know.
It can be set up that way.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So there'd be more than one person that has this?
That's correct. Yes.
Perfect.
Now, this device, the skated system, that's over time. There's other things you have to do along with it. Like, for example, with the new engine that they're putting in, the only thing we have to do with that engine is run an ethernet cable from the computer PC to the controller, which is right behind it on the other side of the wall. That's for the new engine. All the older engines, we have to run cabling back from each engine back to the relay room to get that information.
Now, the next, sorry. Can you take a look at the percentage change at the bottom? I think electric administration is okay, but I'm thinking that power plant and power distribution, it's not making sense with the increase, but yet showing a decrease in the percentage change.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at power distribution or which part?
I think it's both. I think it's power plant. We're still in electrics. Power plant, page five. And.
Okay, page five.
Power distribution.
We have an increase of $137,000, which is probably 5%.
On the document that I'm looking at, it shows an increase of $137,057 with a decrease of 1.61%.
Something's wrong.
No, no. You jump in a line. The 1.61 is belong to purchase power. Are you, are we looking at the printout or online version?
I'm looking at the one that I got via email.
Is it, is it the bold line? 56. You got a wrong formula at the bottom.
It's showing an increase, but then an decrease in the percentage change.
Is it on all papers, Charles?
I don't know.
I have the one I got emailed, and then I got.
The timestamp on this one is 4/22/2020, 2/44.
Sure. How's it doing? I think you work with my paper here. Is that mine right above that?
Because mine are also coming through with like to the fifth or sixth decimal place.
It's different than the one you emailed us.
No, it's the same printout though.
See? That formula down there on this one shows that 3.6.
But it's just the PDF file jumping on below. It's that number?
So we should be going by the ones in our packet, not the one you emailed us.
Yeah.
I guess, yeah. The PDF is just shifting it off. But it's basically the same report when you generate it, right? Somehow.
Well, I can see it's the same.
Yeah. But I guess it's formatting a line, shifting the line. So if you pull the one that's printed out, it's just a computer format.
And just something you're aware of, but it doesn't have a couple of other places where.
Yeah, it did last time.
The formatting where it shifts something.
I think I printed out the Excel sheet, and it came out like you got it. Or if you print out the PDF like this.
I'll make sure that online it looks the same as on the report. I didn't look at the PDF.
Something to be aware of. We don't want to wear any of this for over until this budget cycle.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for noting that.
All right.
Is anything else?
Yeah, we just need to finish the capital items. So the power plant department, to summarize, the control system and the monitoring system that Tim described, and the one that's staying inside the building, requested to be for $70,000. Underground primary power switch at $35,000. And power plant relay upgrade, which is the one going outside, is $25,000. The total for the power plant department is $130,000 requested by department to be for fiscal '21 as the capital items. Then also, we have power distribution department, and total is $87,500 and consists of, Tim, go there.
This is almost identical to what it is each year. We have a certain amount of three-phase transformers that has to be installed, which are commercial normally. Just to let you know, that money normally comes back to the town because the developer pays for it. So we kind of get that back. And also, transclosure replacements, three-phase, we try to do two of those a year. We've been doing those every year now since I've been here, trying to basically get them out of the electric system. We got one at the fire department that's going to be coming up here as soon as the transformer comes in. Underground electrical services, with the virus and stuff going on, I kind of figure that we'll probably do seven new services this coming year. If everything works out, that's at a cost of $17,500. Electric pole replacements, that's maintenance, a thing that we do annually, and we do about 15 poles a year. Each pole is about $2,000 to replace it, and that's about $30,000 for a total of $87,500 for the distribution.
So total capital expenditure for electric department is $278,500, which will be supported by the operational revenues for fiscal '21.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Tim? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Jamie, you step in? Yes, Jamie, you step in? I'll be your male assistant. Oh, Troy, to hire you at the hotel.
Part four, clean the line.
Leave it, you don't need it.
I'm just kidding. The next presentation is going to be by Jamie Latcham, the director of the water resources utilities.
Water fund starts on the reports at page eight. I'm going to go briefly over the water fund revenues. We have special connection fees, which is EDUs. We're projecting to receive thirty-seven EDUs from several entities. Autozone is expected to purchase one. Holmes and Berlin at one hundred fifteen Flower Street, one residential, we're projecting to be built one unit. And Willis, both Terras, estimated to purchase thirty-four EDUs. Total of one hundred sixty-three thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars. It's a slight decrease from projections for fiscal twenty, of four thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars or three percent. Water services, taking a very conservative approach for the increase due to the situation and also the conservation approach of residents for the next year, of an increase of thirty thousand. Six hundred sixty thousand dollars projected to be collected from water sales. Ready-to-serve, decrease of two thousand, twenty-four thousand dollars. Service material, that's what electric department, I'm sorry, electric, I'm so emotional, water department is providing in services for the community, and we're receiving that back bill and through the invoice. Water tower rent, a slight increase of fourteen hundred dollars or two percent, projected to be sixty-five thousand dollars. Those are the rents received from AT&T and T-Mobile and Tenner City on the tower, the water tower. And pretty much this is it. So the total projected revenues for water department is nine hundred forty-one thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars, twenty-five thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars increase or two point eight four percent. Is that the numbers accurate from what on PDF? It's not?
Showing a hundred percent increase. It's okay.
So it's covering the very bottom line, cutting it off?
It looks like it's taking whatever you have, but it's the last cell above the division line, and just carrying that forward.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. Somehow the PDF format didn't go through the...
My main concern is where the mayor was heading, is that whatever we put online, let's just make sure that that's correct.
Right, right, right. But also, this is just a very draft. The introduction will be replaced, and what we have will be the final report, and I'll make sure that the numbers will tie to the printouts.
Thank you.
Jamie, we're going to start on page nine with the water administration.
Sorry. Really, we tried to keep the budget fairly balanced. The only thing we had is really not much in the budget for the administration side. It looked like it fairly stayed level. In the page number eleven, the water treatment, we did put in for capital, no, water treatment, we didn't put anything in there other than, I think the wellhouse should have been in there.
Jamie, hold on a second. Let's push the water and then go.
Water administration.
Water administration, page ten, we've got to give the total numbers.
It's sixteen percent less.
Yes.
Right?
The general overhead is, again, recalculated according to the funds and imbalances in comparison to the general fund. So contingency went down from eighty-one thousand for fiscal twenty to thirty-nine hundred for fiscal twenty-one, and the general overhead went down a little bit. So with that said, there's a decrease of seventy thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars or sixteen percent, to be exact, it's fifteen point ninety-three. So the total budget requested for water administration is three hundred seventy-two thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars. And you have the same thing, okay. Then I will leave.
I'm sorry, that's why I'm not trying to be...
Do you want me to rewind this report so quickly, or it was just okay going on? Reprint that for everybody?
I'm okay, just as long as you read whatever it says.
Do you have a printout copy?
Probably in that package.
That we have in...
We'll read one right now.
I'm okay. As long as I don't keep saying...
It will get...
I want you to just go from the paper instead of the computer, so you have...
Everything else, okay.
Mary, you have the total numbers the same as I'm reading them? On page eleven is water treatment.
Water treatment is the, we have one full-time employee, they take care of the treatment of the water system and pretty much everything that we pump out of the ground. Really, it went down two point two two percent, monitored a negative of three thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars.
And total requested is one hundred seventy-two thousand four hundred twenty-nine. A slight decrease where we valued the amount for utilities and looked back on several years, what the utilities been for the water treatment, decreasing them by five thousand dollars. That's the total decrease. Water distribution starts on page twelve.
And water distribution, contracted services went up a little bit, and the reason of being, I don't know, three seventy-six Bay Street, due to we're doing some stuff out there with the state highway. Capital outlay equipment went up from fifty-four thousand to one hundred sixty-three thousand this year. One part of it being is Patten Avenue Wellhouse, it's the oldest wellhouse in town. It's, I believe, the building's nineteen fifty-one or something. I have to ask Marvin, but it's real, so we were trying to put some money aside so we can, it needs to be remodeled, it needs to be rebuilt.
Go to the corner, you can see it. It's flat roof, and it's a cinder block building, so it's not real pretty, but it definitely needs some serious...
Which location is this?
Patten Avenue.
Thank you.
Where the old stand pipe used to be, right behind the old stand pipe on Patten, right near Public Works Yard.
So requested for Patten Avenue is one hundred three thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars. And also, Jamie, you have, you want to go through the capitals?
Yes, we'd also like to put in some insert valves. We did it some down, everybody's worried over there on the corner of Broad and West this year. We would like to do some more this year so that we could eliminate turning off as much water as we had to that night. So some of these valves will be placed strategically out through town, but we would like to put them in this year.
That way, if you have a repair or something, you can limit the number of people who are temporarily without water service, not as a problem as it is now.
Yeah.
Okay.
And vehicle maintenance went up a little bit, but that was, you know, it went up just a little bit. And overall, it says it goes up, it went up thirty-three percent, and the reason being is we've put more money in for capital this year for the wellhouse and everything, and I requested three hundred ninety-six thousand nine hundred and eight dollars.
So there's a separate pre-How if you want the details for capital, but also you can see them on the budget pages as well. So wellhouse, Patten Avenue, one hundred three seven twenty-five. Street water walls, three of them, for twenty-seven thousand dollars. Total, insert valves, three of them, for total of thirty-three thousand. And the capital outlay for total of water fund is one hundred sixty-three thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars, which will be supported by special connection revenues, which are the EDUs collections. That is all for water fund.
So water fund, overall, or water distribution, water fund overall, when you take the pluses and the minuses, it comes out with zero percent change?
No, no, Mary, water fund overall is two point eight four percent increase. Because your revenues, I think, will...
Okay.
It's applicable to all of the three departments.
Thank you.
Hey, Jamie, how large is that building at Patten Avenue?
The build, we had the plans done, they did it a couple of years ago. I want to say it's thirty, about forty, is what we're planning on building there. The reason is to be able to store some more chemicals. The more chemicals you, the soda ash is the chemical we use, but as long as you keep it dry, it doesn't go bad, so we were thinking if we could buy more, a bigger bulk quantity, we could get a little bit cheaper rate.
I'd like to see that. So I'll get up with you, thank you.
What's the current dimension of the building instead? I can't place it.
Ten by twenty maybe, if that.
Is there, is there a huge cost difference by going for the larger square footage?
Well, we were going to try to keep the old building intact while we build the new building, and then tear the new, old building down once we built the new building around it, so that's why it was going to be a little bit bigger. That way, we could keep it operational, so we wouldn't be down a well for a couple of months while we were building the building.
Now, is the dimension that you just quoted the larger size? Is that what you would need to effectively build around it and then tear it down?
Yes.
Okay.
How much room does one need standing out?
I want to see it as well. I can't picture it, I don't know exactly which one it is.
Can't imagine.
Yeah. You got to read it?
We're moving, if no questions, we move into sewer fund, page fourteen. I'll go over the sewer fund revenues. Haller fees, outsiders are supported to dump the sludge to the treatment plant at a fee per gallon. Projections are a little bit lower, just by looking at what we're receiving so far. Ninety-eight thousand four hundred projected for fiscal twenty-one, a decrease of sixteen thousand six hundred. Special collection fees, which is EDU collections, at the thirty-seven, the same exact project, at a different rate, total four hundred fifty-three thousand six hundred fifty-seven dollars, a decrease of twelve thousand two hundred sixty-one. Living the same, projections for ready-to-serve, that's the reserved connections to the water sewer infrastructure of the town. Sewer services, projections of eighty-five thousand increase at one point eight million dollars, again, just taking conservative approach for the next year. And the remainder of the little miscellaneous revenues will stay the same. So total revenue or total sewer fund balance projected for fiscal twenty-one is two million four hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and seven dollars, an increase of fifty-six thousand dollars or two point three three percent.
Now, we adjusted the haller fees, this was weird.
Yeah.
And I may have been imagining this, but I thought haller fees were up. Am I incorrect?
Well, a lot of it's dependent on the water table of the ground, so drier the year, the less you're going, people's setting systems work. So I mean, it's all based off of the weather, too.
We're also looking at this upcoming year with not many places open and events, outdoor facilities, so we just reduce it to be conservative.
Now, are the predominant customers of the haller fees, are they residential or commercial?
Well, we don't, most of your commercial has involved grease, and we don't accept grease, so I'd say ninety-nine percent of them is residential.
So this is going to be less affected by a commercial market?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Going to each department of sewer fund, starting with page fifteen. The first line item I want to highlight before Jamie jumps into the administration is the fifty thousand projected, projected only, I'm repeating, is transfer back to the general fund to repay the due to do wrong with the funds. This transfer is not going to be made till the very end of the year, and it's based accordingly on the sewer fund balance. So if it's possible, it's going to happen. If it's not, then we'll just hold on to it.
And that's normal, that's the way it always works, is once the budget year is over, the last day, or the last working day of the budget year.
But that's first year we've been allowed a sewer fund to project an actual transfer back to general fund.
Can we have a schedule created for the repayment of that debt?
We sure can.
I'm smiling. I know you can't tell. Thank you.
So I'll start on the administration side. We did, we did take the capital outlay out, we didn't put anything in for administration this year. And overall, I do believe it decreased by one, or not even a percent, but...
Pretty well planned.
So the total, the total for sewer administration as a department on page sixteen, as requested, one point two million eighteen thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars. It's a slight increase of nineteen hundred dollars in comparison with current year. The two items that I want to highlight here is the sewer fund, there is a large debt and services debt, the total is six hundred thirty-two thousand seven hundred and eight dollars in total. So that's, it hopes for to collect the special connection revenues, which is EDU to cover. The projections is going to come to a little bit lesser, so we're going to allocate the regular operating revenues, obviously, to carry the services for fiscal twenty-one. Collection system starts at page seventeen.
And the collection system, capital outlet went up ninety-five thousand, reason being, we need to do some work to Decatur Street, extended lift station, and William Street, we need to rehab that lift station due to the fact that some of the pumps right there are nineteen, I want to say they're sixty-ones or seventies, you know, or nineteen six, late, mid-sixties or early seventies. So we would like to replace them and put some more up to date and update some of the much of the work in there. And that was the, that's the big key item for the reason that budget increased by forty-five percent.
Do we have other, the stations that we're anticipating have to be upgraded in the next, over the next five years?
Yes, sir. Broad Street, nineteen, the electrical end is nineteen seventy-one, stamped into it. I've been here twenty years, nothing's really ever been done inside other than replacing the guide rails, probably three forty-six west and three forty-six east, both of them have to be some work done to them.
So the capital outlay for collection system, Decatur Street lift station, as requested, fifteen thousand dollars. William Street lift station, requested is a hundred twenty thousand, a total of one hundred thirty-five thousand for the collection system. So total capital outlay for wastewater fund is one hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred, all of which will be supported by the operating revenues. by the operating revenues. So going back to the question, uh, can we create a repayment plan for the monies that are from the sewer to the general fund? Yes, absolutely, but we also have to plan and project that what is really a priority according to Jamie, those lift stations haven't been touched in so many, many years. The EDU collection fund, uh, money set aside in a special escrow account and, uh, we're also, all, not also, but always attribute those to repay the debt as a priority and then everything else, what's left could be attributed to the capital priorities that needed to be. If anything or any left afterwards, we can put on a schedule as a repayment to general fund. Unfortunately, in the past, um, that never was a perfect scenario happened. Looking at fiscal '21 projections, the EDUs, if we take the total amount, does not cover the total debt service, so the operating revenues jumping in and covering the capital costs and a portion of the debt service. So what's left is enough to run the fund. Um, with the contingency for fiscal '21, we're only gonna, I'm not sure if we're gonna have any to lose, highlight it with it. It's in water, in the sewer administration.
44,000.
44,000, that's the rainy day, so if nothing happens, everything goes well, uh, we can make the transfer of 50,000 to general fund and touch the contingency and take 40,000 and transfer to general fund. But that's in a perfect scenario. So the repayment plan is useful, of course, it's gonna take probably more than 30 years with the scenario that we will sell enough EDUs each year and we will operate at the full, um, revenue capacity to support the cost.
And I agree. However, when I sit here and listen to what Jamie has planned for capital outlays and I look at the price of the capital outlays that we have currently, $50,000 I think would be better served going towards those capital projects than attempting to try and repay this debt service that in my opinion, we've not been making any effort to repay and should almost be looked at as bad debt that's uncollectible.
Okay.
That's my opinion, but...
Well, that, that's something we can also, also have, uh, you know, have our accounting firm look at in terms of liquidating, uh, debt, you know, we weren't aware that it's accumulating, especially when it came to the sewer fund, um...
Putting sewer fund and writing off as a debt, that will put a big, big strain on the general fund, that basically will wipe off the reserve. But it'll leave nothing. So I'd rather have a plan and have 50,000 or 100, or hopefully 150 a year planned and be able to transfer this amount back to general fund to support the reserve, than write it off and just go with the flow.
But I mean, honestly, right now, I mean, every year PKS sits there and says the same exact thing, that if you're not making a valid attempt to pay it down...
Well, this is the first year after we raised sewer and water rates, we were able to set aside 50, also we're planning on do another study with Jean Holloway, which hopefully will help us to allocate revenues to set aside for capital projects for the future necessities, also to set aside some sort of amount, I'm hoping larger than $50,000 a year to repay the general fund.
But for how long has that debt been there without trying to make any effort to repay?
We're making an effort fiscal '21 for 50,000.
And in, in a real world, you need both.
We do, of course.
I mean, if you wanna be honest about it, that's what you need. You have to, certainly we have to increase the size of the plan.
Yep.
And then, we all got a fix what we've got right now, if we really should put the money back towards the money that it borrowed, if you don't, it wrecks the balance sheet.
I mean, the balance sheet is fictitious, honestly, right now. I mean...
It's receivable.
It is receivable, only if the, the receiving agent can actually pay the debt, which we can't.
But I think it's an attempt to, what she's trying to say.
Yeah, I, I understand the attempt, but what I'm also saying is that if this fiscal year we move forward at the end of this budget and we say we can put $50,000 towards that debt repayment, and then we roll around the next fiscal year and we're like, oh crap, we need $50,000 for a, a capital project that we couldn't cover, what are we gonna do? Just take it again?
Now then, we have to really rethink of the structure of the fund itself. If the fund cannot support the costs that it needs to run and cover the debt and cover the capital and cover the existing debt, which is basically due to another fund, think of it as you repaying the bank as well, you can bail it out, so then the fees and everything else have to be restructured to the extent that it could support personnel, operating costs, capital costs, debt costs, and depreciation in the end.
I just see the $50,000 better suited towards sitting in a contingency that's rolled over, that gives that fund a little flexibility in the event that we have a no crap moment, when we need to be able to put a, a capital project onboard, like what happened down the road, that was not a foreseeable expenditure, and if that money had not been there, we would've had to look at the general fund or borrowing through some other mechanism.
Well, that's why I specifically said that we're gonna leave the transfer till the very end and hopefully that's gonna happen in the last of the year of fiscal '21, but it has to happen, it cannot just go away.
Can I, can I ask a question, it seems to me, because this is what we found out a year ago, over a year ago, is that ultimately, to be able to do both, do both responsibly, at some point in the future, not years, but at some point in the future, we're gonna have to raise the sewer fund rates again. I mean, but basically, if there's not enough money coming in to, to pay off the least, reasonable, reasonable payment of debt over, let's say 30 years, and to have a capital improvements, then, then the water, uh, and sewer fees are too low, and I think part of this is the money that was spent, that cost us so much, was also, not just to keep the water flowing, but to make sure the whole operation is environmentally, uh, sustainable and, and responsible, and I, I think everybody supports, most people support that. But what we're finding is a town in which I'm, everywhere I go, talking to other officials, environmental responsibility has a price, and, and it's a lot higher than we were told 10 years ago or so. And, and, and again, time is the right thing to do, but now what we have to do is adjust the rates upwards over time so that it comes back in balance, because, uh, you know, we would, if we known how much, and again, we took the projections that were given to us by qualified, you know, engineers and so forth, but it wasn't just here, it's everywhere, it's just, it costs a lot more. So if we're going to hold that horse, which I think is the right thing to do, we're going to all have to get used to higher, uh, fees that are related to environmental responsibility.
I don't wanna remind everyone, year to date compared to last FY, FY, the two, the two funds, water and sewer, right now, I mean, the, the additional revenues are roughly $390,000.
And that, that's because we...
That's right.
We would, we'd be, we just wouldn't be able to keep going, we can make those adjustments. Those adjustments are not punitive, they're basically based on the, the new reality of not only providing water, but providing it in an environmentally responsible way, and that's just, it wouldn't matter who was sitting in any of these chairs.
I would, I would love to see, um, Jean Holloway's report for, because it gives a much better picture of what her study's gonna show us we're gonna need.
We're working on it, I don't think we will be able to push something for fiscal '21 because it's in such a rough stage right now, but I think the goal is to present for your review some sort of a draft by the end of this fiscal year, um, and then maybe discuss it, discuss, yes, discuss it more in details in fiscal '21 and maybe fiscal '22, go with the...
Okay. I mean, what is the expected date of, or completion or...
I, I'm sorry.
Any idea?
I'm gonna go take a wild guess, very, very likely, maybe something under that, but...
Love to see it.
But back to my point, I'd like to either see a debt repayment schedule or writing off the debt, we gotta do one or the other.
I think writing off the debt, uh, is kind of premature now, uh, for, for, for even a consideration, due to the fact, uh, this is the first year that, that we have with these increased rates. I think to consider something like that, we're gonna have to have just a little more history, just a little more history.
But what do you think about, I mean, PKS literally says every year, we need to have a repayment schedule, and every year we say, okay, but we never get the repayment schedule.
I'm not talking about a schedule, I'm talking about, uh, you were suggesting that, that, that the debt be written off a, as just bad debt.
But that was their recommendation, was either to have a repayment schedule for that debt or that that debt is being inaccurately represented and needs to be written down.
Their recommendation was to have a solid attempt to start repaying, if not necessarily with the schedule, because the schedule, if you're gonna take a number and divide it into 3.5 million dollars, that's gonna take forever and ever. So if we can put 50,000 in fiscal '21 and 250 in fiscal '22, that's great, but the attempt to repay that debt is what PKS has asked us to do.
Yeah.
I believe they would say a partial write-off, not, not a total write-off.
Cause they were hinting at the fact that we can't just carry 3.5 million dollars as a...
I think, I think, I definitely agree with that, I just think as part of their presentation this year, if you'll ask them to be more specific about what our options are, I think that would be very helpful, because at least now, we, now we're in the process of doing that and what the projections and what percentage, roughly their recommendation, because we ultimately have to make the whole budget work, what percentage we should, uh, consider write off and what percentage should we pay down at what, in what schedule? So, you know, that should be part of the presentation, which will come in the fall.
Let's close the fiscal '20 because that's gonna be the first year with a new rate implemented. Let's go in fiscal '21 with the projected 50,000 and a new rate implemented for 12 months because fiscal '20 is not even 12 months, because we started the rates July 1st, the billing fell half months and then we bill months behind because we also calculate the billing, so it's only 11 months of true up rate increased revenues. Um, going in fiscal '22, let's take an approach of looking into a percent reduction of the due-to-do-from fund and a schedule, after we will have the 12 full months of revenues. That's my suggestion.
I'd ask John Stern to get his opinion as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, now.
Yeah, well, I mean, till the fall.
Yeah, I don't think we wait the fall and, you know, the discussion.
We've discussed that in and off with Leslie Michael, and she basically said, it's ultimately end of our decision and see how much we can support to get out.
They're saying, they're saying they'd like to hear from PKS based on what, what we're considering now in this budget, uh, we still have time, and hear what the recommendation is, or what, or if they're saying you can do this or you can do this, but we have to choose the consequences of whatever decision it is. So just, just give the call and see if they can't be here for next year, okay?
An email from me. An email from me, I don't...
Oh, what, yeah, I, I... Yeah, I know. I think, and the other thing is, the other thing is that people will be able to, under discussion and research, is hear what we're trying to decide. You can't hear an email, but you can hear, hear a discussion.
Sounds, that's fine by me.
Okay. Thank you. All right, what's next?
Um, the stone water fund is the only thing we have on the schedule for today, and it starts on page 23. Um, fiscal '21 stone water fund revenue is projected to be 378,650, um, a decrease of 75,900 or 16.7 percent, basically we're not anticipating to receive any grants and revenues projections pretty much staying at the same level, with the exception that we will be presenting, um, a rate increase that being evaluated and done with help of EA engineering and that's upcoming on the...
In the executive session.
Executive session. So if the stone water rate fees will be adjusted out, then I will recalculate revenues and introduce listed numbers.
So that, our goal will be to make sure that we do everything we can to make sure there's not a, a minus in that, in that budget of this year, for the new fiscal year, and that's why we have to, have to seriously consider, as we said, again, over a year ago, that the decision by the mayor council, the past budget year was postponed because of everything else we had to do. So we said we would consider it again this year, so now it's that time to consider for the fiscal '21 budget and, so that, that's where we are.
So the same decrease and the same percent of 16.7 percent decrease is reflected in the expense size of this year because we have to have a balanced budget. Only item, it's very different, is the first line item on page 24 is a contribution back to general fund, and that's again, a projected number with the hopes by the end of fiscal '21 to transfer 25,000 dollars back to general fund for the money that's standing from the stone water.
Natalie, this is without any rate increase, this is keeping our rates the same?
That's...
This projection?
Without.
Without any increase.
But also without any capital improvements projected, so the rate increase will have to be considered, um, thinking of the capital outlay and also operating fund. That's all we have to do, that's for now.
Thank you very much.
Glad to be here.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, we will now conclude, conclude our budget work session for the utility funds and, um, take a brief break and then we'll restart our regular session in just a few minutes.